I'd like to call to order the Westmont Village Board Meeting of July 18, 2019. To order at 6 o'clock PM and ask Clerk Simmsky to roll call.
Mayor Gunther?
Here.
Clerk's here, Trustee Eddington.
Here.
Trustee Barker.
Here.
Trustee Berry is absent tonight, Trustee Guzzo.
Here.
Trustee Little.
Here.
Trustee Nero.
Here.
Attorney Carrara.
Here.
Village Manager May.
Here.
Finance Director Parker.
Here.
And the minutes should reflect the junior mayor.
Oh, that's right.
John Paul Alexander is here this evening. He is serving as our junior mayor, so.
(applause).
Everybody, please rise and join me in the pledge. I'm going to ask John Paul to lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome. I see Deputy Chief looking around, but if there's anybody here who'd like to address the board, this is open forum. For anything that's not on the agenda, now's the time. So everything is going to be on the agenda, so I will close the open forum and move on to reports. Of course, my report is first, and I introduce John Paul. We had a, I'll say a raffle, but we donated the opportunity as a fundraiser for an individual to become a junior mayor.
Hard night. He walked around with me, took pictures, outdressed me.[127.64][127.64](laughter). I told him, "If you wear a tie tonight, he's in trouble."[132.12][132.12](laughter). So, he's been, he enjoys public service, and tonight was his opportunity to sit through our committee meetings and then be a participant in our board meeting. So I don't know of John Paul, if there's anything you'd like to say. No, I didn't think so.[154.12][154.12](laughter). He did a good job leading us in the pledge, though, so, thank you. Fourth of July. Now, we got some visuals. Again, fireworks were tremendous at Taiwana Park. I think we've had perfect weather this year, what we thought we weren't going to have. So, again, thank to Westmont Auto Mile as the main sponsor for the fourth. And I know Oak Brook did cancel theirs, so we had ours still. I'd like Larry and Jenny, if you're here, talk about our District 99 student intern.
Thank you, Mayor and Board. As a couple of meetings back, you had a chance to meet Calvin Herien, and he was our summer intern, and it went amazingly well. Not only did we provide a lot of opportunities for him to get involved in field trips and things of that nature, but Calvin really rose to the occasion and kind of helped lead the charge in creating a new program in which we're going to get the business community more involved in the potential hiring and/or creating internships for people with special needs. And so it was very exciting, and a big thanks to Jenny, who coordinated a lot of that. And it ended up that transition's 99 program basically told us that it was the best internship that they ever had. So, we're looking forward to having more students back, and Calvin has already dedicated himself to come back as a volunteer, so we'll be seeing more of him in the future.
Go ahead.
Also, the Westmont Suburban Life came out and did an interview on Calvin, took pictures, as you can see her taking a picture of Calvin at his desk doing his work, and it was published in the Suburban Life. So go online and check out his article. So it's a nice story about his internship here with Village of Westmont.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The Sister City update. Students from Taiwan came here to cook at the Taste of Westmont. They experienced the Fourth of July at Taiwana Park and cooked with chefs from B Restaurant from the Hilton. And again, it was a huge success. We're thinking about creating an internship program for the month of July with Hilton and maybe some of the other restaurants, so that was really successful. And on August the 30th, I've got the pleasure to announce that the Westmont Post Office dedication will be for James Robinson, who we've had a lot of information on. They're going to name it for him. He was born in Westmont and received the Congressional Medal of Honor during Vietnam. And again, he was a grandson of a former mayor, and it's rare that a post office will be named. So, again, we'll have more detail come out on that as time goes on. I'm just looking back to Larry if I missed anything. Do they want the open forum? They can reopen it, I always said I would. All right. Before I move on to reports, I had some individuals come in that just missed open forum, so I have no problem with them coming to the podium. State your name and address, and then what you're here for.
Hello, sorry, we're late. My name is Dana Stromeyer. I'm on the school board and newly elected, and we had some, so also want to introduce myself, hello. But we had a couple children in our neighborhood with some concerns they wanted to bring with you. So we've got Elle Stromar, my daughter, she's going to be a fifth grader at Manning, and she's one of four siblings, and Ally Judd, who's going to go into seventh grade at the junior high at Westmont, who's the oldest of five. So Ally's going to start.
Hi, my name is Ally Judd. I live at 212 South Wilmette Avenue on the west side of Wilmette between 55th and Quincy. There's no sidewalk on our side of the street. In the last five years, 20 kids have moved into homes on our side of the street. We love being able to play in our neighborhood. We feel it is a blessing to have so many great families around us. However, there's an issue with the lack of sidewalk. Because there is no sidewalk, we have to cross our street in order to ride bikes or go for a walk or get to the bus, et cetera. Wilmette is a very busy neighborhood street. It is often used as a cut-through from 55th to Cass. It also carries many, many village trucks as they commute to and from the Public Works Building that is at the end of our street. On a typical school day, I have to cross the street to get to the sidewalk in order to get to the bus stop. My three younger siblings also do the same. A few months ago, we got together and walked our neighborhood with a petition to get support for a sidewalk on our street. The majority of the neighborhood was in support. Please consider our request.
Hello, my name is Elle Stromar. I'm here to ask if my side of the street, South Wilmette, can have sidewalk. We have families of many kids on our, on my street who live on my side, who unfortunately could not make it here today. We are still here to try and get some sidewalk. Three families purchased some sidewalk, which makes it easier to finish the job. For a long time, we've, we've been thinking of this opportunity, and today, we've brought up the idea. Two of our kind families have asked the entire side of our street we live on if they want to have sidewalk. Nearly the entire side signed the petition. We hope you understand. Thank you for taking time to listen.
Anybody else? You're welcome. Does that mean you won't walk from my house anymore?[527.12][527.12](laughter). And again, putting sidewalks in, I'm sure staff will get back to you. There's a lot of different reasons we do or don't. I know on my street, the whole right-of-way is on my side and none on the other side. I don't know if that's the case at Wilmette or not, but they'll be able to get back in touch with you. Do you have power?
Yes.
Okay. See the other side of the street that doesn't have power?[550.12][550.12](laughter). Trustee Little's side.
That's me.
Again, thank you.
Would you, if you would.
Good job, ladies.
Leave your contact information with the Public Works Director, and we'll follow back up with the rest of the process.
Thank you. Very good job. And since we started at 6 o'clock, I've already made an opportunity, if someone comes late, to still give an opportunity to talk to the board. So I'm going to move on to Clerk Simmski.
Okay, I'm going to talk about the walking to Hinchshue City. We are meeting our goal and beyond. Program ends October 31st, creating a Facebook page just for this event so that the participants can connect and share their progress. Community garage sale, August 2nd through the 4th. Sign up by July 30th. More information on the village website. And then someone very special sitting up here tonight is having a birthday Saturday, and that would be Trustee Nero.
Thank you.
Twenty what?
Twenty-one.[618.12][618.12](laughter). All right. And I'll move on to the trustees, and this time, we're starting with Trustee Eddington.
Thank you, Mayor. Before the meeting tonight, we had a meeting of the Community Development Committee, and lots of information was passed out. Probably the most important thing we talked about tonight was to try to expedite the process for some of these smaller permits that are necessary. For instance, if you have to replace the door in your house, or a window, or a burnt-out water heater, or something like that, there's going to be a recommendation for us to look at at our next meeting to go to what they call an express permit. There's going to be some requirements that will be necessary for that, and you'll see more information on it when it's presented. But what we're hoping to do is speed up the process for each of you as the folks who need to get something done, especially if, in this weather today, you know, your air conditioner goes out on you and it has to be replaced. You don't need to wait two or three days for a permit to be issued. There's going to be, under this new format, if it's adopted by the board, and I think it will be, to allow you to get the permit on that day. And so you can get the work moving and get it done, and then, you know, get your inspection. And then we talked a lot about some other things that are being done. There's a couple of things on the agenda tonight with storage containers that we're going to address. And then we were updated by Community Development on a lot of the projects that are going on around town. Probably the biggest one is the one right down here at Kans and Quincy, which is now, we understand, going to be called Quincy Station. And they're probably going to apply for demolition permit and start that.
Middle of August.
Be the end of, end of August and September 1st, and then within a couple of months after that, probably go into starting the construction. And that's going to be a, that's going to be a super big project, and I think a very positive one. So, lots of good things going on. Community Development continues to try to do things downstairs when you come in and have to do something, to try to continue to work with you, the residents, to make it as painless as we possibly can, but at the same time, to be, make you understand that a lot of times, one of the reasons that these permits are drawn, or that are required to be drawn, has nothing to do with the permit, really, other than the fact that there are public safety issues that are involved with this. You're dealing with electricity, you're dealing with gas lines in many cases, you're dealing with things that could cause problems for you in your home, and we got staff to be sure that the contractor you've chosen, number one, is someone that is registered with us, and number two, does the job that they're supposed to do, so you're protected. So, that, we're your protection. So even though there's a permit and there's a cost involved in that, it's really there to protect you so that when you get the work done, it's done right and done properly for you, so that you can continue on without worrying about it. And I think that covered everything, so that's all I have to make, Mayor.
Well, thank you.
Other than to thank everyone for coming out for the Taste of Westmont and visiting the Lions booth, if we could have controlled the weather, we could have had even a lot more fun than we had, but, you know, it's 25 years now. I think Mayor has mentioned more than once that it was my wife who started that thing 25 years ago for this, for the 75th anniversary, and it has become just a spectacular town event. And for all of the volunteers who worked, not only with the Lions Club booth, but all over the Taste, they did a phenomenal job, even, even though they couldn't control the rain.
No.
Not their fault.
No, but Jada and the good, our volunteers, I've said it all along.
They were great, yeah.
Best anywhere, so. Trustee Guzzo.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple things. First, the next Public Safety Committee meeting is going to be August 15th, 4:30 here at the Village Hall. Everyone is invited to attend. Next, I would have, I have the pleasure of inviting up Sergeant Skamorzac and Wibler, Erin Compton, and members of the Expressions Dance Studio for a very special presentation about Special Olympics. I want to invite them all up to the podium.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor, junior mayor, trustees and staff. We were contacted by Expressions Dance Studio that they wanted to present to Illinois Special Olympics Torch Run section that me and Sergeant Wibler are liaisons for. They want to present a donation. Last year, we raised $16,000 for Special Olympics, just through the torch run for Westmont alone. This year, we're already at $14,000, and we're only seven months into it. So, we keep on pushing ahead, and I'll give you Erin Compton.
Thank you for the Village of Westmont for including our Expressions Dance team. We competed in the Power of Dance competition. We traded our trophies for a donation for the Westmont Police Department Torch Run. We danced our hearts out and won $720.
Wow.[1012.12][1012.12](applause).
Thanks to the Westmont Police Department for helping all for our dreams possible and our wishes come true. When we live unified, we can do anything. Thank you, Westmont. You are all awesome.[1046.25][1046.25](applause).
Thank you. Good job. Thank you, girls. Do a photo in the front, I guess.
Yeah. Wow.
She takes an awesome, she takes an awesome picture for the, with Deputy Chief for the beginning of the year, wasn't she the poster? Poster. Yeah. Thank you.[1067.54][1067.54](applause). And the police department is the only fundraiser we're involved in, and they do a tremendous job promoting and raising funds.
Yes.
Justice.
Wonderful. Secondly, with the police department, the Open House and National Night Out is going to be August 6th, from 5 to 8. Details are on the village website, which is westmont.illinois.gov. Please check that out. Moving to the fire department, the Kids' Safety Camp. Camp was a big hit. The kids had a great time and learned about bus safety, met a police dog, practiced first aid, learned about wildlife and more. Pictures from both camps will be on the village website soon, so please, everyone, check that out. And once again, I do want to thank the police department for all their hard work with Special Olympics. It's a great opportunity, they do a wonderful job, so thank you to the police department and to the village and all of our Special Olympians, so, thank you.
Thank you. Move on to this side, and I'll start with Trustee Nero.
Thank you, Mayor, just a few items. First off, our next Public Works Committee meeting is September 26th at 6:00 PM, right here in Village Hall. And I want to remind everybody that July 25th, so next week, is Public Works Night at our Cruising Nights and Streets Fair. So make sure you come on out, see all the Public Works trucks, and it's always a good event. And then, at the same night, at Cruising Fair, Cruising Nights, we'll be partnering with Urban Vet and Urban Veterinary Associates and the DuPage County Animal Control Services are bringing their animal van out, and they partnered with a few adoption agencies to try to get some dogs and cats adopted, so they'll be out there the whole night. I think they get their five or so, and it starts, so looking forward to that. And then I just want to say, Westmont was represented real well yesterday's annual DuPage Mayor's and Managers Golf Out, and no, no cost to the taxpayers, a lot of staff were there, and I think Westmont was the best represented. Some of the staff need to work on their golf game, but other than that.[1193.32][1193.32](laughter).
Well, that's good to hear, that means they're working.
That means they're working hard, so that's all right. Yeah, it worked out okay, but it was a real good event with all the other communities, a good networking opportunity and well-attended, so just wanted to make sure everybody knew that. And lastly, just on the Special Olympics note, they still are selling raffle tickets, and they're doing a real good job of it. In fact, I think they're getting close, but please, if you, you know, if you know anybody that wants one, I know there's a few other community elected officials that are helping, please ask, they're $20, and it goes to a great cause. And that's all I have, sir, thank you.
Well, thank you. Trustee Little.
Thank you, Mayor. The next Administration/Finance Committee meeting will be held August 1st at 4:30, and again, the public is invited to join us right here in Village Hall. The Taste of Westmont, what can I say, it was great. We had a lot of fun, hot, but tons and tons of fun. The volunteers, as everybody's already reiterated, that we just couldn't do it without all of them. They were so phenomenal, they turned out for the carnival, they turned out for the beer tent, tents, plural, we had two beer tents this year, and it just worked out great. We had a lot of fun. We were also able to hand the police department a small donation from our tip jar at the second beer tent, or the main beer tent, so that turned out really nice. We gave them, I think it was $128 tips, so we were very happy to do that for them. We also have cruise nights back in the plan. We started again tonight, and of course, we want everybody to turn off your television and come on out. This is a lot of fun. Even if it is hot, we're all going to get out there and, if I can get out of this meeting fast enough, I'll be there too in orange.[1298.66][1298.66](laughter). The next 5K event for the Ronald McDonald House, Larry McIntyre. Yes, Chief Gunther's not here. If you'd like to tell us about that one.
Not quite 5K.
Sure, actually, yes, it's the .5K, so.
Oh.
It's a much shorter journey.
It's a quickie.
A lot of you may be familiar with Nisha Gorilic. She's a local resident, very active, works for the school district, and this will be the third year that she and her husband are coordinating a fundraiser, and the beneficiary is Ronald McDonald House. And they've always done this in association with the uptown here in, here in town, but this year, they're interested in doing a .5K event, in which basically, that's a lap, so like a half, half a block lap where they'll be walking on the sidewalks and then coming down the alley and then make it right back down to the uptown for fundraisers and things like that. So we want to make everyone aware that this is happening. The plan has been discussed with Chief Gunther, and everyone's fine with it, but probably two weeks from now, we'll be presenting the full details on it. But it is a fundraiser for Ronald McDonald House. Wanted to put it on everybody's radar.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
We have Summer Fest Lockball Tournament. The Park District invites Westmont businesses, residents, or organizations to form a team. Players must have a Westmont affiliation, and allowed two non-Westmont affiliated players to sign up. Your team must contact the Westmont Park District. And that's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Well, thank you. And I think what Trustee Little failed to mention is that she was a volunteer during the whole time. She was out there either through the Taste Committee or her EMA uniform.
This year was all.
Taste.
Orange.
All right. Well, thank you. Trustee Barker.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of things this evening. The first one is, Westmont First has a community arts initiative that you're all aware of. And in June, we had local artists go down to a building in town here, 22 North Cass, which was, the use of that building is being donated to us to help support this art initiative. And we had artists in there displaying their work. We have another one of those nights coming up, so if you're at the Street Fair on July 25th, stop in that building there and see the artisans, and they're, you know, they're local, we say they're local, but they can be from anywhere. We're just promoting the arts and coming to our community. And I stopped in there last time, very talented people. There was one artist there that was, and I go to all these fairs every chance that I get, very unique artwork, professional, beyond belief, you know, just, you know, a higher level. One day, I hope to get there, you know, that kind of thing. But anyway, it's a very neat thing, it's working out. This, so far, we have 17 artists signed up, and if you are out there and you hear this and you want to be part of that, you can go to the village website and sign up to participate. And then we'll be doing that again in August. And then our next Westmont First meeting will be August 19th at 6:00 PM at the library. And then, switching over to the EIC hat, the Environmental Improvement Committee is out at the Street Fair tonight, and they're promoting a concept of, we're talking about light pollution, and it's a dark skies initiative that they're working on and bringing that to the attention of people of not overlighting, you know, their property, or their house, or their office building, or the neighborhood, or whatever, and then the advantages of that. So they're educating people tonight, and I want to just thank them for that. They're out there, I know it's hot out there, and they're doing work on our behalf as volunteers. That committee will meet on August 5th at 6:00 PM at the Westmont Library. And then, lastly, if you, I want to make everybody aware that mosquitoes, Clark does our mosquito abatement, there's a hotline there, and residents can report high mosquito populations with all this heat and all this rain and everything, standing water, and you can report all those things at the clark.com website, and I'm sure you can call Village Hall here and let them know as well, and report the things that mosquito abatement would be used for. We have that program, and I'm sure, I have to say, at the fireworks, I wasn't bothered by mosquitoes. So, that's all.
Well, thank you.
Can I do?
Yes.
I totally forgot to thank the fire department, the police department, the village staff, and the public works. They put in hours and hours and hours of effort on the Taste, and thank God they were there for us. Thank you.
And I think everybody realizes it's a volunteer group, and it also involves most of the organizations in the community, so it truly is a community event. All right, moving on. Public hearing. Fiscal Year 2019-20 appropriation ordinance, public hearing. We need to conduct a public hearing for the fiscal year 1920, but before I call the public hearing to order, I'd ask Director Parker for some information.
So just primarily for the benefit of the public, just wanted to give a brief overview of the appropriations ordinance. I know the board's very well aware of it and how it works, but in general, the way that our village functions is we have a budget, which is the plan that we use, and that's something that the village board goes into a lot of detail about over the course of multiple meetings. At the same time, the library board goes into a lot of detail into the library budget over the course of multiple meetings. We figure out the plan of what we plan to spend. However, the next step, then, is to make the official documentation of the maximum amount that we can spend without coming back to the board to ask for additional revenue. That amount we can spend is what we'll also use next year when we do the property tax levy. So, this appropriations ordinance is higher than the budget that was approved because this is the maximum limit we can spend in case of, you know, emergencies, contingencies, or in some cases, you know, if we get extra money in grants, we can then spend it, or if we, you know, are able to get things to purchase, additional land, or build towers, water towers, any of those things. If we find other revenue sources to help us spend the money, we now have the ability to do that without, without having to come back to the public and ask for additional resources. So that's what this appropriations ordinance is. We do have Brittany Smith, the Assistant Library Director, here to answer any questions about the library appropriation portion of this.
So at this point, I'll officially open the open forum, and anybody's welcome to come up and ask questions, so. Open forum is open?
Public hearing.
Public hearing, I'm sorry, I, public hearing? And I won't, if someone comes late, I'm not going to let.[1739.12][1739.12](laughter). Seeing no one, I close the public hearing, and we'll move on to items that will be removed from the consent agenda. Does any board member see anything they'd like removed? If not, we're going to ask Manager May to take a deep breath and read.
Four pages of consent agenda. We did not have a, you know, in our pattern, we meet every two weeks, and we did not have a meeting two weeks ago, so this is almost a double meeting in this sense. So tonight, on the consent agenda, the first item, our village board Seeing no one, I close the public hearing, and we'll move on to items to be removed from the consent agenda. Does any board member see anything they'd like removed? If not, we're gonna ask Manager May to take a deep breath and read.
Four pages of consent agenda. We did not have a, you know, in our pattern, we meet every two weeks, and we did not have a meeting two weeks ago. So, this is almost a double meeting in this sense. So, tonight on the consent agenda, the first item, our village board minutes. Board to consider a motion to approve the minutes of the June 20th, 2019 village board meeting, village board meeting. Second is Finance Ordinance Number Five, in the aggregate amount of $2,398,164.2. We have several purchase orders. First purchase order is West Central Municipal Conference, $34,629. This represents this spring tree planting. This is the tree product, and they do the planting for us now, too. Thirty-four thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Second, Thomas Engineering, $31,952.57. This is our CBD alley, Section D. This is design engineering. That section is the east side from Burlington to Irving. Next purchase order is also Thomas Engineering, also design engineering, but for Section C of the CBD alley program. That's $69,853.60. Section C is the west side, Norfolk to Naperville. Third purchase order, Thomas Engineering, $28,063.47. This is called Phase Three. This is the construction inspection services, but termed Phase Three Engineering. That is the east side, and that's the piece from Irving to Norfolk. Purchase order for Safe Step, $20,000. This is an open purchase order, a bulk amount for sidewalk cutting, whether it's direct cutting or grinding, to address trip hazards. Next is Thomas Engineering, $24,792. This is, represents the engineering design services for the Cass Burlington realignment project. Next purchase order, M.E. Simpson Company, $30,362. That's for valve exercising. Next purchase order, M.E. Simpson Company, $36,720. That's fire hydrant flow testing. Both the valve and the flow testing are throughout the village. Next purchase order is Westmont Chamber of Commerce, $24,000. That's the annual contribution to the Westmont Auto Mile. Next, Infrastructure Management Services, $50,000. Also an open purchase order, but this is our, every five year, actually, every four years, we hire this company to do a five-year plan for pavement maintenance forecasting. Next purchase order, Curry Motors, $111,453. Represents three replacement vehicles, and the vehicles that go out of service, of course, go to auction or continued use within the village. That's it for purchase orders. The total of the purchase orders is $461,825.64, and that brings the total of the purchase orders with the finance ordinance to $2,859,989.66. Last on the consent agenda are, under Community Events, is the TW Craft Beer Fest. Board to consider an ordinance approving the following requests from the TW Group Incorporated. First, amplified sound permit, tent permit fee waiver, food truck permit fee waiver, water hookup fee waiver, liquor license fee waiver. This event is held, this is its third year, is also relocated to Ty Warner Park, and the Park District has already granted approval for this event. And that concludes the consent agenda, Mayor.
Do I have a motion to approve as presented?
Motion to approve.
By Addington to approve.
Second, Little?
Motion made in second. On the question, anybody have any comments or questions about? Any trustees?
Just a comment, Mayor, on the TW Craft Beer Fest. I just wanted to thank Tom Walsh and his family and all his staff. They always do this event. It's a great event, and they raise a good amount of money for the people's resource. They don't have to do it, but it's a lot of fun, and good community, a good way to give back to the community.
Any additional? Seeing none, I'd ask for roll call, please.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Parker?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on to unfinished business. Available Class 23 liquor license. Fremont Bar and Grill. Board to consider ordinance increasing the number of available Class 23 liquor license by one for Leji Corporation Fremont Bar and Grill, 1115 Fairview Avenue in Westmont. And we've got Commissioner Mulhern.
Evening, Mayor and Board. Lehi Corporation doing business says Fremont Bar and Grill, 1115 Fairview Avenue. Submitted an application for a Class III, Class 23 liquor license at the beginning of the year. Board delayed the request for six months to be resubmitted at tonight's meeting. A Class 23 license is required to provide or allow video gaming by the Illinois Gaming Board. Fremont Bar and Grill wishes to provide video gaming as an amenity to its customers. The primary business will continue to be that of a restaurant. And with me here tonight is the General Manager for Fremont Bar Grill, Mark Zayed. You should have a copy of my review, which was provided to the mayor and manager. Previously, in speaking to the village attorney, he suggested, and I agreed, that there's one part of my review that I wanted to re-speak here tonight at the podium, if I could read that to you. It's a, "All liquor licenses are issued on a case-by-case basis, or the village board has used a distance of 500 feet at a minimum between gaming locations as a guideline in past decisions on issuing a Class 23 license or not. This distance is not in our ordinances, but is a guideline that most, if not all trustees, use in their decision process. The distance between video gaming location has been an important concern of trustees in past applications." The board has considered the central business district an area of Westmont where some issues are granted, denied, or determined differently from the remainder of the village. This was true in the issuance of a Class 23 license to Johnny Blitz Bar and Grill. The distance between Johnny Blitz and the Potbelly Pub is less than a 500-foot, less than the 500-foot guideline previously considered by the board. The distance between the Class 23 liquor license locations in the central business district has been less elsewhere in the village due to unique nature, location, and composition of the businesses in the central business district. If a Class 23 license is issued to Fremont Bar Grill, this will be the first business outside of the CBD to receive a Class 23 that is under the 500-foot guideline between two Class 23 licensees. In this case, Fremont Bar Grill is in the same strip mall and only two businesses apart from, or approximately 75.34 feet from each other, the other one being Laura's Place. I have received inquiries from other businesses interested in obtaining a Class 23 license where they are also less than 500 feet apart. In two instances, one in the central business district, they are right next to each other. A decision to grant the license to Fremont Grill may have an effect on future applications for Class 23 licenses outside of the CBD with respect to distance between gaming locations. And as I started out before, again, all liquor licenses are determined by the board on a case-by-case basis. This meeting was last in front of you, this issue was last in front of you at the January 31st meeting, and was continued for six months till today for your decision and a determination. So, Mark is here to answer any questions that you may have, as have I, and that's all I have.
I think, just to point out, there's a number of different reasons to grant or not grant, and the 500 feet was not really one of our ordinances. It was something that we kinda went by. So, the attorney's just pointing that out for our reference.
You get, just that, Mayor, as I put it, it's just that, a guideline. It's not an ordinance nor a rule. It's for each trustee to give it the way that they choose to give it individually when making a determination for issuing a license like this.
Mark, how will you segregate your gaming units from the rest of the restaurant?
Whatever the law requires me to do, I'll do. I know there are some places that built walls, half-walls, someplace that used stanchions to separate it. So, whatever's required, I'll do. And I have, like I said, when I, the bar has a nook built into it for gaming, where it's not gonna impede on any of the dining area at all.
Which, I know your restaurant quite well. Which, where's the little?
You know where the dartboards are in that back room right there?
Yes, in that area?
Yeah, that area, right in there.
And I think it's important that we do remember that we do this on a case-by-case basis. We have to look at all the facts. We have to decide what we want going forward. And I do believe it is something that, as these start to come up, we will just have to step back a little bit, think about what we're doing, and, because there will be times when it's not going to be feasible for the 500-feet distance between businesses.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Addington?
Second. Nero?
Motion made in second. To approve. Additional comments?
The only comment I have, again, this is more informational, is that Mark has become a real nice part of this community. He's joined the Lions Club and has become somewhat active. I have found him to be a really good person. I've enjoyed working with him, and I know he had a problem. It was more of an employee problem than an ownership problem, but he had a problem. He stepped back for the six months. He's kept his notes clean. And so, I'm much, very much in favor of giving him this license and moving forward.
I just wanted to say thanks for your patience.
Thank you. Happy birthday.
Yeah, thanks.
Anybody in the audience who'd like to comment? Again, the, if we approve it, this is what the intent was, to help our local businesses.
Right.
And not have all these cafes, which we've done a good job at bringing anymore in. Seeing no additional comments, I'd ask for roll call.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Parker?
No.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Court. Thank you, Mayor. Much appreciated.
Thank you. And we still want you involved.
Yeah, no, amen.
All right, thanks, Mark. We'll move on to new business. Fiscal year 2019-20 appropriations ordinance. Board to consider ordinance adopting the fiscal year 2019-2020 appropriation ordinance. Director Parker?
Yeah, kind of covered the summary of what it was at the public hearing. I have nothing additional to add unless there's any questions from the board for me or for Assistant Director Smith.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Nero?
Second. Little?
Motion made in second to approve. Any additional comments from anyone? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Parker?
Yes.
Trustee Grubel?
Yes.
Trustee Ed? Yes.
Motion passes. New business B.
Official.
Massage establishment license. Dolce Vita Spa. Board to consider ordinance increasing the number of available license and the approval of a massage establishment license for Dolce Vita Day Spa, 220 North Cass Avenue. And I got Commissioner Mulhern.
Evening, Mayor and Village Board. Natural Health, I'm sorry, that's wrong. Dolce Vita Day Spa purchased and renovated their building and are now ready to open. They are in need of a massage establishment license. A background check was completed, and they are eligible to receive a massage establishment license. They have remodeled and improved the building in order to relocate their business from La Grange to Westmont. They want to be part of our community. The number of available licenses needs to be increased by one, and a license approved by the board. Mayor, I have with me here tonight Justina and her husband, the Gomulas, who have purchased the building, as I stated. It's been a two-year trek. I first met them two years ago, when they came in to get a massage establishment license upon learning what they wanted to do and buying the building. It's been a two-year trek for them to get here to you tonight. As Justina told me out here in the lobby, they are not a massage business so much as they are a day spa. And in my background, I looked at their services, and I was highly impressed. And in checking with the Village of La Grange, they've been there for seven years with no issues, no incidents at all. So, I give to you, Justina is the owner and going to manage the business. I give, introduce you to Justina, so you can ask any questions that she may have. And if you want to tell the board a little bit about your business.
First of all, I just want to say thank you so much for being today. And we came a long way to be here, pretty long way, you know. We appreciate your time and to be here. We want to say thank you so much, Tom, for spending a little bit our time to be here as well, you know. What I want to say about myself, I'm licensed massage therapist and licensed physical therapist from my country. I'm from Poland. We, actually, yes, we day spa. We're gonna have beautiful spa room with jacuzzi and sauna for any spa parties for the ladies, and also for kids spa party. We're gonna have massages. We're gonna have a Vishi shower over the head jets. We do the different type of techniques, like a butt rubs, butt scrub, but also steam tent therapy, which is very, maybe popular in Chicago. But it's actually made in the United States, the same as a Vishi. So, we do the detox packages, something different, healthier. We step forward for the healthier lifestyle. I'm a little bit nervous, so if you would like to ask any question for me.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Little?
Second. Nero? Motion made in second to approve. Additional comments, questions? Anybody? Seeing none, I just have to say, are you, have you done anything with the building yet? I haven't been, yes. What have you done?
It's already done. We just want to, excuse me, I just want to say, when we talked today, we had a final inspection. Everything went great. Everything was really, you know, impressed, you know, and we impressed. We had a really great, great construction, construction guys, you know, who they did amazing job, amazing. So, I would only say, you know, I would like to invite you for the grand opening. Hope so coming soon.
Is this your second location now?
No, I closed La Grange.
Yeah.
Because it's too crowded for me, you know, and it's no parking space. I bought the building with own parking. So, actually, I'm coming with clientele. I have already a hundred members, you know, ninety-nine percent women, I'm sorry. But we welcome all of, of course. So, it's, you know, it's really great, you know, what we're doing, you know. We, I have a passion with this, you know. So, I definitely, you know, it's something special, you know, very spiritual also, and something I would love to, you know, continue here, you know, and say thank you so much. I just want to be part of you, you know, and be a kind of like a family, I hope so, and work with them, Westmont, as well, do some great things. My idea is like, do some free services for the cancer people, for the maybe single mothers. I don't know yet, but definitely I want to do something good, you know, something what can, you can be proud of me.
Maybe with the committee meeting that we had earlier, we should ask, they didn't get the express permit, but how was it working? How was it working with community development? Were they good to work with?
Yeah, very nice. I was expecting more difficulties, but you know, the process was very, like, yeah, fast and kind of expedited, you know. Took us a while to make all those architectural plans, finding our responsible construction crew, got estimate prices, you know, but treated very, very smooth. I can tell really, inspection, we got little issues, like on Monday. We fixed everything. Today, we got everything reinspected, and everything was up to, you know, requests, and it passed.
The reason I ask is because we only hear the bad stuff.
There you go, yeah.
Honestly, I heard some bad stuff before, like some, you know, comments about Westmont. I was kind of scared, you know, how it's gonna go, it's gonna be delayed. But, yeah, it was a good experience, honestly, very good experience.
Thank you. Good luck to you.
I just want to say something, because I had a business with my friend. She did eyelashes extensions. So, she rented space in my spine, La Grange, and she went to Willowbrook, and I came to Westmont. And she told me, you know, I'm going to Willowbrook. I said, I'm going to Westmont, because I feel the good energy there, you know. So, she said, good luck, you know. I said, you see, it's gonna be very good luck, you know. So, that's why, you know, I'm here, you know, and I'm really proud that I chose, you know, this, you know, town, you know, to be here and bring my business, because I feel that in my heart, and it's gonna be great for all of us.
Thank you for relocating here.
We better vote before we tell her she can relocate.
Welcome.
She's passing inspection. She's opening up something.
Ask for roll call, please.
Trust, sorry about that. Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Parker?
Yes.
Motion passes. There, now.
Thank you.
You're stuck now.
So much, and I hope so see you on the grand opening. Thank you so much.
Welcome to Westmont.
Good interview.
Mr. Mulhern, you could, looks like you're gonna stay up there. New business C. Massage Establishment License. Natural Health Therapy. Board to consider ordinance approving the issuance of a massage establishment license for natural health therapy, 519 North Cass Avenue. Commissioner Mulhern?
Thank you, Mayor and Village Board. Natural Health Therapy, looking at 519 North Cass, has applied to renew their expired massage establishment license. A background check revealed that they are eligible to receive this license from the board. In late 2018, Natural Health Therapy relocated at Donner's Grove and did not renew their massage establishment license. They now wish to return to Westmont and are required to reapply as a new massage establishment. They had been in Westmont for 20 years. With me this evening is Danny Day. Danny is the owner of Natural Health Therapy. A little bit about a background real quick. He has been in Westmont for 20 years. He has been in Westmont for twenty years. He started out at 700 East Stockton Avenue, moved to a dealership, moved to a business that was in a strip mall that was purchased by a dealership and, what do I want to say? Taken down. He then moved to 519 North Cass with a new landlord coming in. He made a business decision to go to Donners Grove and has now decided he wishes to come back to Westmont. He's gonna go back and work at the vision where he was at 519 North Cass. I think being in business for twenty years is something to say. The reason why we had him go through the initial or the brand-new license rather than, he was gone for more than, license was expired or in limbo for more than five months. And speaking with the village attorneys, his recommendation that we go through the process just to make sure. He's very, very interested in getting back to doing work again, back here in Westmont. He's happy to come back here to Westmont. His massages are more for on the medical type of massages than they are for the relaxation or a spa. And the building is the, I think it's a four-story white building just south of Walgreens on Cass Avenue, that's where he'll be relocating. So I have here Danny Day. If you have any questions for him or if there's anything you want to say or?
Firstly, I love Westmont. Come back, moving over five months. I've working here just almost twenty years. My job is for acupuncture, massage, this copying for more healthy things, care, for help people to take care for cooperation with doctor, less chemical and shot surgery helps. So say thanks again, yeah. Westmont, Westmont government, thank you.
And Tom, during the twenty years, we really had no issues or problems?
No, I, first I've heard and met of Danny is when he came in to reapply, which is a good thing to say.
Former police chief, you would have known.
Yes, Mayor, I would have. My, my background base was very easy with Danny. And Danny is the only, while he is owner, his wife will be there working with him at the receptionist, but he is the only therapist or he'll be doing it himself.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Little?
Second, Guzzo?
Motion made in second to approve. Any additional comments? Anybody from the audience? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Welcome back.
And approve, welcome back.
Say thanks again, give me chance to work, give myself a service.
All right, good.
Thank you.
And you got Mr. Forsberg back there anxiously waiting to set that up. New business D. Mariano Service Station, 140 West 63rd Street. Board to consider an ordinance approving the following requests from Roundy Supermarkets Incorporated for a gasoline service station at 140 West 63rd Street. One, a special use permit. Two, preliminary plat of subdivision. And three, site plan and landscaping plan. I got Director Sylvester to give us some more information.
Mr. Mayor, trustees, the Plan Commission considered this item at their last meeting. They had a public hearing. There were some residents from the condominiums across the street on the south side of 63rd Street who attended that public hearing. They had some questions just about public safety, particularly gas leaks due to the news and the recent events with the Speedway on Cass about a year or two ago. All of those concerns were addressed by the applicants specifically with the requirements for double-walled storage tanks and some other protective measures. That was really the only issue that was raised by the community during that review. Actually, the other issue that came up was traffic, but we did have a traffic study. We asked the applicants to provide a traffic study. Our outside engineer reviewed it and found that it was reasonable and that the traffic impacts would be minimal. So really, those were the only two concerns that came up during the public hearing process. Staff has vetted the application. We're recommending approval. And if you have any specific questions about the details of the proposal, I'd be happy to answer them and the applicants are here as well.
The, and Marianos has service stations at other locations, right?
Yes.
So this is an uncommon. Any, I need, I guess now we're gonna do each one motion. So I'm looking for a motion for the special use permit.
Motion to approve special use permit Nero?
Second, Little?
Motion made second to approve the special use permit. Any additional questions?
The only thing I want to say is thanks again to Planning and Zoning. I actually watched that meeting. They always do their due diligence. They make our job a lot really easy and I want to thank the members of the planning and zoning staff as well because it just helps make decisions. So, thank you.
Amen to that.
Seeing no other questions or comments?
One, Mayor, if I may, or more for them, or Bruce, maybe you will want to answer it, too. Most of the customers, do you think, are Mariano's customers or?
Yes, Tim Crutz, 3025 Highland Parkway, Donners Grove. So the station is open to all general public, but with your Mariano's card that you use, your loyalty card in the store, you can actually get additional discounts. So they find a lot of people go to the store, then go purchase fuel after.
Yes. So they're, so the two get tied together to some extent?
Yes, they're, they're very tied together. The gas station works no different than a department within the grocery store itself.
Okay. Great.
Any other comments? Seeing none, ask for roll call on item one.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Motion passes. I also need a motion for the preliminary plat of subdivision.
Motion to approve number two Nero?
Second, Little?
Motion made in second. Any additional comments? Roll call, please.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Motion passes. And the third one, site plan and landscaping plan.
Motion to approve number three Nero?
Second, Little?
Motion made in second. Roll call, please. Mr. Mayor?
Ask for comments.
Oh, comments, does anybody have been asking, so? Nope? Anybody? All right, roll call.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Motion passes, I guess, when? Who'd you start? Yes.
We want to start as soon as possible. I'm Brianna Cotton, I'm with Roundy Supermarkets. So, yeah, we'd like to start as soon as possible, so we're gonna start working on getting everything together for permits. And then, you know, it just depends on weather after that, so.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Do we, do we control all of this or do they, because of the underground tanks, do they have additional permitting through state fair and marshal and everything?
Yeah, so there is, the whole tank system and piping will go through.
So there's a whole bunch of oversight to this thing?
There is, lots of stuff for permits.
Being optimistic, when do you think you open? Tomorrow. Better suit to answer.
That, that's a little tricky, depending on how long permits will take. We would love to open it this year, but we have, basically depending on how long permits take and getting contractors and everything, it may be next year.
Okay, thank you.
Optimistic this year, realistic next year.
I remember seeing the preliminary plan, that hasn't changed from when they made the presentation at?
Correct. We, we made some minor changes landscape-wise and.
But the building, the way, yeah, okay, good.
Same orientation. Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Good luck. Looking on new business E. Resolution for maintenance under the Illinois Highway Code, 2019 MFT resurfacing project. Board to consider an Illinois Department of Transportation resolution for the village's 2019 MFT resurfacing project. Director Ramsey.
Thank you, Mayor. Like to request appropriation of sum of three hundred, three hundred and ten thousand for, three hundred and ten thousand dollars for the 2019 MFT resurfacing project from the village's allotment of motor fuel tax funds. This project will be combined with last year's that we had to postpone from the 2018 MFT resurfacing project. Staff recommends approval of this resolution of the amount of three hundred and ten thousand dollars for the 2019 MFT resurfacing project. About it.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Guzzo?
Second, Addington?
Motion made in second to approve. Comments, questions? Anybody in the audience? Seeing none? I'm ready. Okay, roll call, please.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
He's not here.
I'm sorry, Trustee Barker? I'm sorry, I knew he was gone. Trustee Little?
Yes.
Motion passes. New business F. Engineering Agreement, 2019 MFT Street Resurfacing Project. Board to consider ordinance authorizing an engineering agreement with ESI consultants for Phase Two Engineering Design Services for the 2018-2019 Street Resurfacing Project. Director Ramsey.
Thank you, Mayor. The 2019 MFT Street Resurfacing Project will be combined again with the 2018 Resurfacing Project. Both combined projects were, will be proposed to resurface approximately two miles of roadway along with other related work. Requested to approve the sum of nineteen thousand nine hundred and sixty-five dollars for both Phase Two and Phase Three engineering with materials testing services included with ESI.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Addington?
Second, Little?
Motion made in second to approve comments. That's a roll call, please.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Motion passes. New business G. Engineering Agreement Parkway Reconstruction Project. Board to consider ordinance authorizing an engineering agreement with Engineering Solutions Team for Phase One and Phase Two Design Engineering for the proposed Parkway Avenue Reconstruction Project. Director Ramsey.
Thank you, Mayor. We're requesting approval of sum of seventy-nine thousand seven hundred and ninety-six dollars for Phase One and Phase Two Design Engineering Services for the proposed Parkway Avenue Reconstruction Project. Design will include a reconstruction of Parkway Avenue, Liberty Boulevard, and Washington Street. This reconstruction provides a location for the West Dealerships to unload vehicles rather than on Ogden Avenue along and along Plaza Drive. Reconstruction will include roadway widening, storm sewer upgrades, sidewalk curb and gutter, streetlights, and other related work. So we recommend the proposal that was proposed by the Design Engineering Services Company.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Little?
Second, Nero? Motion made in second, additional, trustee adding.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Have we talked to, or maybe the better question would be, how does this impact any of the residences farther back into the Liberty Park area with, with deloading and unloading that we would propose being allowed there?
That's a good question. If you, obviously you know where that street is. There's no houses directly off that house, or off that street, I should say. There are houses along Liberty Boulevard and on Washington Street. It's, you know, it's loaded, located directly behind Zazos. We have talked to some of the residents of Liberty Boulevard and they have not had any, you know, negative comments about it. We did not talk to anybody on Washington Street because that is unincorporated Westmont, but we did talk to the residents that are ours in Liberty Boulevard and there was no indirect negative comments about it.
It is the commercial back, you know, to them already, so whether it's Buttry or Zazos or that, that small shopping center's got access to the back too.
Right.
So it's kind of already commercial for those purposes.
Yeah. I guess I would.
It's quiet.
I would question whether even if any of those residents go to Ogden Avenue, it would almost seem to me that if I was there, I would probably want to go down to Ogden, I mean to Cass or to go, yeah, rather than try to turn out on Ogden Avenue, especially at the busy times. But the question would be whether this would impact any of them. I think it's a good idea because it does, we don't really have anything for those West Dealerships other than Ogden Avenue right now, so this would open that up a little bit.
I know you're asking specifically about residences, but if you can picture the businesses there, so the, the west boundary is that Liberty Boulevard and that's well-used stone Parkway by Buttry, so that would all be cleaned up in parallel parking and of course it's public parking, so it's not reserved. But that, you know, for the radiuses and everything, so they'll, they'll have some opinion about it, but this portion is just to do the design of what that might look like and it's not construction yet.
Okay.
Any additional comments? Or seeing a roll call, please. Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Motion passes. New business H. Award of bid proposal for the new public works facility, 55 East Burlington Avenue. Board to consider ordinance accepting the bid proposal from Path Construction for the new public works facility at 55 East Burlington Avenue and authorizing contract consistent with the bid document. Director Ramsey.
Thank you, Mayor. The village accepted bid proposals from seven contractors for the new public works facility. The low bidder was Path Construction with a low bid of fifteen million six hundred and eighty-eight thousand four hundred dollars, which is approximately five percent below the engineering estimate of sixteen million five hundred thousand dollars. The staff does recommend awarding this bid to Path Construction for that amount.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve Nero?
Second, Little?
Motion made in second to approve comments. Trustee Barker?
Just a couple of things. One is I didn't think we'd ever get here. And we did, so congratulations for all our work. I mean, it's, it's long overdue, years and years, and they should have done this back when Jim was mayor.
And Jim was, who would bid?
For half the price.
But long overdue, so it's, it's well-needed and everything. And then I would just ask on the end of this, because we're, you know, we talk about it like it's, it's a huge project in the county and all that. This number reflects what we think the cost is, but there's a lot of soft cost to this and I'd like to see that at some point, if the board could see everything in, what did that cost? When it's all said and done. And then I, I'm assuming somewhere in there, the, you know, how you hear the village does these projects, not us, but other communities do these projects, and they have cost overruns and, you know, we started out here and the protections against the change orders and the environmental issues, that we'd be real kind of vocal about those and share that the environmental issues, that we'd be real kind of vocal about those and share that, so that, you know, there's, there's nothing worth to end up, start here and end up over there, and you don't take everybody along for the ride, and then there's, there's anger and frustration for that. And I just got a, my, my job, I just got a $13,000 change order, and to me, it's no big deal in a, you know, a million and a half project, but to one particular person, it's a lot of money. And so, that, you know, that, if it bad soil or some other issues, you know, make, make it public, you know, that kind of thing.
And you, in, in that figure, you've got some contingency money in there, so.
Correct. Yes, we do. And I think we've done our due diligence, at least preparing for this project. Now, moving forward, yes, with tariffs, with, you know, who knows what's going to happen with billing material costs and all that. I think we've done a pretty-
They're going to go this way, Mike.
I, I understand. And I think we've, we've built a little bit of a cushion in that, but that doesn't mean, I mean, your comments, very important. I mean, it is, it does make sense, because you just don't know. I mean, you hope that, you know, costs stay relatively, you know.
Right.
Even, but, you know, with the tariffs, with China and all these other countries that we might have, who knows what billing cost could be. But we're hoping that we get this project started soon, we can get this done.
As of today, this is the number.
Yes.
You know.
Yes, but it might not end up being that. You're right.
Right, right.
Unfortunately. Hopefully it won't be.
We pledged revenue stream to cover this bond, so hopefully, it'll stay under that 16.5? Is that what, or 17?
Seventeen.
You told him 16.5, but we got 17.
Yeah, way to, way to spoil that.
Well, 17 is so we can pay the engineers to finish working on the project, either make sure it's constructed correctly.
Trustee Addington?
What do we know about Pace? Pardon me, what do we know about them? They're a very good company. They've done many, many projects in DuPage County. Done, we've done our due diligence and research on them. In fact, they're in.
You're comfortable with them?
Yes, we are. We, I mean, you know, we've done, like trustee Barker said, this is a long time coming. We've done a lot of steps to get to this point, and we've done our research and our homework, hopefully, and I feel very confident with them. In fact, one of their employees is a Village of Westmont resident, so, you know, that's, that's just a bonus.
He just raises taxes, doesn't he?
So, that's just a bonus, having somebody in town.
That Westmont first thing, right?
Yeah, right. So, it's, it's very nice having, having that, you know, relationship already in place.
They've done projects of this size.
Hey, Mike, do you mind if they come on up, introduce themselves?
Sure, please.
Thanks for coming. That's great.
Mike, when they're coming up, the work being done at the old garage site, that's separate from this?
Yeah, that's already completed.
That's what I thought. Okay.
Can we send all the complaints from the project to his home, since he lives here? And your cell phone number.
I'm Jeremy Stenulis. I'm one of the project executives at Path Construction, and I live at 10 North Roslin Road. We've lived here for 16 years.
Great.
My wife is on the environmental committee. She's actually over at the car show tonight.
Across from Mark Pinky.
Yeah.
So, project's very personal for us.
Awesome.
As far as Path Construction is concerned, we're about an $80 million a year company. The owner, Rick Kraus, built his career at Walsh Construction for 26 years, doing a lot of public work, and just last year, celebrated his 10-year anniversary of being in business on his own. Over his 10 years, a lot of public work. We're currently working on, that I'm involved in, four Chicago Public Schools projects over the summer. Finished a new maintenance facility for Olive Hardy, Olive Harvey University, and we're finishing the building at College of Lake County as well. So, very well-versed with the public work. Okay? This is Frank.
My name's Frank Pollicchio. I'll be the project superintendent. I'll be the person on the job from day one until the end. I'm excited about starting the project and looking forward to working again in Westmont.
I have one question. Okay, so now, we've got this on the agenda. We're doing the bids, and we've got the engineering. So, when do we think we're going to start this project? Just a ballpark figure, or a ballpark date, rather.
Well, right now, the, the vote tonight is contingent on us receiving our letter of intent.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, once we receive our letter of intent, we can start letting contracts to our subs. Our intention is to start right away.
Okay.
Okay? I, I understand that most of the permitting process is complete, and we just need to submit our subcontractor licenses.
We're having a problem with the community development department.
So.
They're slow.
So, what we've started on our end, since we've met with Public Works, is we've actually already started vetting our subcontractors and identifying what our log and lead time subs are.
Okay.
The biggest one being the precast concrete for the, for the trucking facility. So, we've already been working with that sub with the anticipation of this being approved and the letter of intent coming forward. So, we've already kind of hit the ground running.
And then, construction time, what are we looking at? A year?
On average, we've estimated between 14 and 18 months.
Okay. All right. Well, that's good.
Depending on weather.
Two years.
Yeah.
If it's worse weather, maybe done sooner.
It'll be done for 2021.
That's what we hope.
Hundredth year.
That would be awesome.
That was our goal originally, was to be done before the foundation.
It's great.
Thank you.
If it's all originally was for the 75th, now.
It's true.
And it would have been a lot cheaper then.
Can I have the, roll call, please?
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Motion passes. Professional Engineering Services, the new public works facility. Board to consider ordinance authorizing a professional engineering service agreement with ACOM for construction, engineering, and resident project engineer for the new public works facility. Director Ramsey, you've got more on the agenda than Mulhern, so.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm requesting to approval of some of $990,700 to perform the construction services of new public works facility. The construction services include preparation of conform documents, shop drawing, a full-time resident engineer, preparation of change orders, record drawings, and all pre-construction and monthly meetings, and review of all requests for payments. This dollar amount is approximately 6.5% of the total cost of the project. Most, we always try to shoot for professional services to be somewhere between 7% and 10%, so this is, this is below that number.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Little?
Second. Nero?
Motion made in second to approve. On to question. I know that 7% is a good benchmark, so we got to.
Correct, and this is below that.
Still a big number.
It's still a big number, but it's a big number with a big project.
Percentage-wise.
Yes.
All right, I ask for a roll call, please.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Motion passes. New business J, video gaming terminal license. Board to consider ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 22, Article 12, Division 9 of the Westmont Code of Ordinances related to the licensing of video gaming terminals. Commissioner Mulhern.
Thank you, Mayor and Village Board. And I must, before I start, point out, junior mayor as well, too, his dedication to be here for this is outstanding. Article 22, Chapter 22, Article 12, Division 9 requires a village license for each video gaming terminal. The proposed amendment eliminates the cap on terminal licenses and clarifies that terminal licenses are issued by the village clerk along with other ministerial amendments. The State's Video Gaming Act allows a licensed establishment to have up to six terminals and allows a municipality to license the terminals. Village Board otherwise regulates video gaming through the liquor license process. And speaking, this, this is a housekeeping issue, and researching the issue of businesses now being able to add one more terminal, going from five to six, which is allowed by state law now, we, we looked at our ordinances and found one in there that was made prior to the creation of the Class 23 liquor license and the video gaming. And so, village attorney and I figure, recommend that we create this ordinance. Basically, a business can have as many terminals as the state law allows. However, they must have an application if they intend to increase any, and they must pay the fees. And checking with Alicia Richards, Deputy Village Clerk, all businesses have all paid for all their fees for all their terminals. This will just be for now, those that want to go more, and we had one inquiry from one business already.
I think the way you've, you've worded this, if somewhere down the road, they change it again and make it seven or eight, it, it's covered.
All they got to do is come in, get an application, get the additional terminals that you want, and pay the fee. License fees are $25 annually each year. They expire at the end of each year, and again, all businesses have been in compliance.
We're hoping by two years from now that maybe we can change that, too.
I bet you, probably in two years, you'll see 10, 10 terminals.
No, I'm thinking more about the fees once we get to home rule.
If, if you go to, yes, right now, by state law, we're restricted to $25. If you go to home rule, you can set whatever fee you wish.
Do you know often with other communities?
I have, I've spoken to the retired chief, I believe, in Oak Brook Terrace, and if I'm not mistaken, they're almost considering going like almost $1,000 a terminal. Because, again, that they.
Make that in the first half hour.
Yes, you're correct.
Exactly.
Especially if I go, no.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Nero?
Second, Little.
Motion made in second to approve. Other comments? Junior mayor, no? Too young.
Can't gamble.
If none, roll call, please.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Motion passes. New business K, zoning tax amendment for tobacco and vape products. Board to consider ordinance approving tax amendments to the zoning ordinance to define and regulate vape, tobacco, and similar tobacco-related businesses. Director Sylvester.
Mr. Mayor and trustees, very briefly, we talked about this during the committee meeting earlier tonight. These are some rules that basically say these kinds of businesses would only be allowed in the B2 zoning district. They would require a special use permit so that there's some neighbor notification, and a chance for some public review by you and the Planning and Zoning Commission, and it imposes some spacing requirements for these kinds of businesses, similar to what we do for liquor stores.
Do I have a motion?
Go move, Guzzo.
Second, Addington.
Motion been made in second. Comments? Anybody?
I think this is great. This is something I think that we need to have, yes.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Motion passes. New business L, liquor license waiting period after denial. Board to consider ordinance amending Chapter 10, Section 10-39 of the Westmont Code of Ordinances to impose a 365-day waiting period before an applicant can reapply for a liquor license for the same premises after the denial of a request for a liquor license. Commissioner Mulhern.
My last one, so leave it be done with me. The amendment requires a liquor license applicant to wait 365 days before reapplying for a license after the denial of initial request. Given detailed consideration that goes into determination, this waiting period is in the public interest. This waiting period is annogal, annogalus? To the one-year waiting period to reapply for a special use permit after an initial denial, and it allows the applicant and the village to determine whether changed circumstances warrant the granting of the license. You could tell that was drafted by the village attorney. Basically, right now, if we, you, the board recently, or within the last year, denied a Class 23 liquor license. If any other, and in years past, they've denied a massage establishment license. If someone were to come in and wished to reapply, we had no waiting period. Basically, if tonight, if you had denied a license tonight, they could come in next week and reapply again. So, in discussions with the mayor and the village attorney, we wanted to recommend to the board that if the board denies increasing licenses by one, or the mayor denies a license, that that first applicant must wait a period of one year, similar to the Class 23 365-day period, before they can reapply.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion to approve, Little?
Second. Nero?
Motion made in second. Additional comments? Seeing none, roll, roll call, please.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Everyone, have a good night.
Thank you, Tommy.
New business M, cargo containers for nuisance. Board to consider ordinance amending Chapter 38, Section 38-82 of the Westmont Code of Ordinances to declare the use of cargo containers as a nuisance, subject to certain exemptions. Director Sylvester.
Mr. Mayor, trustees, very briefly, this is an ordinance that would give our code enforcement staff the ability to require people to remove cargo containers or storage containers from their property.
And I think we discussed it, and the consensus was that we should actively.
Yes.
Go and enforce it. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Little?
Second, Addington.
Motion made in second. Additional comments? Seeing anybody? Our new construction crews aren't going to have these either, right?
They might very well could.
They probably will on a short-term basis. Roll call.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. On to miscellaneous. Does anybody have anything they'd like to add? Yes, trustee Barker?
Yeah, just one thing. I, I just want to thank Spencer for his conservative approach to finances here in the village that makes these bigger projects possible, because without him counting all the nickels and dimes and working through the bonding and all that, we wouldn't be in a position to be able to do this now. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. That's very kind of you. Anything? Yes, trustee Little?
Mayor, I'd like to thank our junior mayor for being a part of tonight's proceeds.
And now, since we asked you, do you have anything to add, or like to talk? Come up to the podium. State your name and address. No.
I'd like to thank everyone for being supportive of me tonight, and I've learned a lot.
Good. Any questions?
Not that I could think of.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no other items, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn the executive session